Good evening ladies and gentlemen, welcome to tonight's Exorby meeting. Mainly called because of the pandemic in May, the annual Town Council meeting, where members of the public are allowed to attend and ask questions of the council. It was held online, so you're restricted to meet with councillors and ask any questions that you'd like about the Town Council's operations and its procedures. So basically what we said later on in the year, which is today, we would hold a meeting for members of the public to come and ask questions, any questions you like related to Mr. Senator Town Council or things within this parish, which is Eddes Kinley, Fitzwilliam, in accordance with regulations that were governed by. First of all, I'd like to thank you for coming, I'd like to thank councillors for coming. Before we start though, I'd like everyone to be standing if they want please, take a minute's silence for the people that we've lost over the last 12 months due to pandemic and other situations, thank you. Thank you ladies and gentlemen. Before we start, if you can switch your phones off to silence or if you can switch them off, I appreciate that, thank you. First of all, I'd like to welcome a new member of the Town Council who was newly elected a couple of weeks ago, Mr. Sean Paletti, Shane Paletti, sorry I forget his name, Mr. Maureen. This is Shane Paletti, who was an independent councillor for the South Ward of Hemsworth. And also I'd like to introduce you to the other councillors in case one or two people don't know who they are. There's Sean Milton, independent, West Ward. Eric Mitchell, independent, South Ward. Peter Arneaker, independent, Kinley Ward. Graham Erst, independent, South Ward. Maxine Hurd, independent, East Ward, Hemsworth, Labour. Alan Dodson, Labour, Fitzwilliam Ward. Anne and Jeff Westmoreland, Labour, Fitzwilliam Ward. Jean Eccles, independent, Kinley Ward. Stan Wilson, Vice Chairman of the Town Council, independent, East Ward. Obviously there's Miss Helen Gray, B Tamblor. And Miss Elch Jimcendin, independent, East Ward, Hemsworth. So the first thing is apologies for absence. To receive apologies for absence is considered for all the reasons for the absence. Sean? Councillor Bringle and Councillor Eccles. The materialization of interest, councillors should declare peculiar or peculiar interest in any item on this agenda. I don't think there will be any on this. And the next item, number three, is public question time. To receive questions from members of the public on any matter of the council business, including but not limited to... The first one on the agenda is Kirby Road complex. We are limited to answers after Kirby Road complex because it is a matter in the High Court this, between Eddes Town Council and Sow. We are the defendants in this case, so we've had to defend our corner. So it's open to you guys. Yes?
Yeah, it's probably not related to the court case, can I just ask? Have plans...
Do you mind giving your name?
Sorry, it's Donna Moran.
Donna Moran, yeah.
Go on, I'll have a microphone. Yeah, so have plans been drawn up for Kinsey Road, for the sports complex already?
Kirby Road.
Kirby Road, yeah, sorry. So have you got an idea on what you're wanting to build?
There's been a...
I don't think mine's working either.
It's pretty close to him.
No, it's real light, come on then. I'll need batteries, I think. Can you hear me, Pat?
Yeah.
He's gonna put a new battery in.
If I can ask, oh, it's a couple of questions, I've asked them all together. So if the plans have been drawn up, how much is that building or the new complex due to cost? And if, you know, you're successful with the case, let's forget all that. If you've got the ability to build that, where's that money gonna come from?
Do you want me to wait until I'm seen now, or do you want me to wait for Mike? Can everybody hear me, because obviously there's one or two people out of there.
Do you want this one?
Probably be back in a minute.
Jill can't hear you, so...
Yeah, I'm saying, I'll wait for this mic to come back. Right, so your first question was, has any plans been drawn up for the complex yet? Yeah, I think we're coming with designs who kindly drew us a look design up of what that complex could be turned into, which was a football stadium, a BMX circuit, junior BMX circuit, the senior BMX circuit from 14-year-olds up to open age. There were an aster turn, and then there were either rugby or a football field that could be provided in that area. Coolidge also drew and designed the area pre-charge for Wenger Boys concert, which I think you've seen on more. Related to progress in that, we've not been able to progress it because obviously we've had to sort the contracts out, the Sow construction first, to see what was happening. Sow Construction should have completed the contract and paid Eddes Town Council 1.75 million on 21st of July 2012. But unfortunately they failed to complete. It's now 2021, nine years down the line, they're still not completed or paid. And there's issues that's written in the contract with regard to interest and other things, which obviously could be sorted out once this matter goes to court in March next year.
Sorry, my question was more about how much is it gonna cost?
Well, we've had a rough idea of costings from a company. I forgot their name now, I think you've got it, haven't you? Yeah, yeah, Coolidge Designs got us a rough quote from somebody that they knew. And you'd be looking at it to about six to eight million pounds, which obviously, once a council put into auditors, then it could progress from, you know, from there, like we help Wakefield Council in other departments.
Can I just ask, do you only get one quote from someone, do you not actually go out?
Oh yeah, he would go out to tend it, exactly, but we just wanted an idea at that time because it's no plan in it or progressive it until this court case is out of way, until, you know, this situation's, it's sorted out and resolved with a developer.
And the 6.8 million, it's quite a large margin, isn't it, for a quote? But does that cover the building and the ongoing operational costs? Because obviously Eddes Town Council are gonna have to pick those up as well, aren't they?
Yeah, well, it was just a rough idea of what it would cost. I think it was broken down like for a stadium with one stand, changing rooms, rehabilitation centre, a gymnasium, and then a BMX track. So each individual item could be done over a period of time, depending on what lottery grant the council would be able to obtain.
So it's not gonna come out of council funding and you're looking for grants for this?
Well, we do for grants, but obviously we'd probably have to put some of our own money into it.
Okay, and is that money available?
It could be available next year, what we can put into it.
The grants will be capital grants, which would pay, if successful, to pay for things to be built.
But it won't be on tax costs?
Revenue costs would have to be borne, a mixture of the Town Council and any income from the sports stadium.
And has a business case been put together to look what the income of that could look like?
Not as yet, because there are lots of incidents to go through before we get to that stage. Lots of hurdles, the biggest of which being the case of Sow Construction.
Okay, and one final question on that one. I know we've done a lot of impact assessments on pollution in the area. Have we done one on what that would look like for the sports complex?
An impact pollution assessment?
I think it's been acclaimed that Hemsworth's got one of the highest pollution levels in the area.
Cross Hills.
Cross Hills, yes.
Yeah, Cross Hills obviously is declared as an air quality management area. And any plans that would be submitted would be, would include any calculations to be done for the land, so I think that would attend that, you know, that facility.
Could the council share that report?
No, we've not had a report done, but it would, we're not at that stage yet.
No, sorry, the Cross Hills one, going off of a slight tangent, but the Cross Hills one, it'd be interesting to see that.
Yeah, if you go on, go on the council's website and look at air quality management areas, where emphasis is on, and it due to the readings over the last seven or eight years, since it was declared an air quality management area.
And the same will be done for Kirby Road then?
If plans have progressed like any application now, you have to include, you know, does it require an air quality management assessment prior to that? Most people that would use that would be from Eddes Kinley, Fitzwilliam anyway, so your only chaperones would probably be Kinley and Fitzwilliam. Hemsworth, people would probably walk to it.
Right, okay.
Yeah, I chair the Environment Committee for your DUC policy, and I'd like to know where you get your information from, the air quality of Cross Hills, because as the Chair, I looked into that, and I don't think your information is quite correct, Councillor Kenyon. And I would like you to verify that, because I have the fact that actually it's not the worst in the district, and I really don't want to dis pollution people.
Well, Councillor Lincoln, who's here tonight, can verify that. We've had several meetings with Garry Lincolnson. You know Garry Lincolnson?
Yes.
Yeah, and obviously Stephen Douglas owns the scientific office of Wakefield.
But I'd like to see the facts.
Just one minute, just one minute, I mean, obviously I've not got facts here today. Did you write that question in?
You should have, if you're saying it.
No, no, I've been asked a question about air quality management, and all I can tell you is the update on meters that we've had with Stephen Douglas and Garry Lincolnson, who you're aware of, you're on our circles. I didn't say it, but one of the worst in Wakefield, made obviously M62, M1 junction's one of the worst, I don't believe. Well, it's still rising, there's been no improvement. But what I'm saying is with Hemsworth, there's not been much improvement with Hemsworth from 2015 up to 2018.
That's actually one of the better in the district, Councillor Kenyon.
Well, I will ask, I will ask Garry Lincolnson for an update on figures. I mean, obviously, they've not had a pandemic, we've not had an update on figures.
All right, so don't, yeah, up to date information to be reviewed.
Yeah, well, that's what I will do, and obviously then, and then what we'll do, I'll ask Alan to provide that information on Eddes Town Council's website, what people...
Thank you.
I mean, my worry is with that, which is, obviously, what you've got to understand is it's still declared an air quality management area, so it must still be...
You just said yourself, you did not check.
No, it's still, it's not been removed. Two, three years ago, they were on about removing it, it's not been removed. So it's still declared an air quality management area. When did I last check? About six, seven months ago? The figures have not been updated then on Wakefield Council's website. But like I'm saying, if it was said that there were no issues with Cross Hills, then it would have been undeclared as an air quality management area. It's still declared.
I think the concern is, there was a meeting a couple of months back with, around Hemsworth, the Woodlands development, and one of the councillors, I don't think I'm allowed to mention names, said that Hemsworth was one of the worst areas in the country. And that's verbatim from that councillor in that meeting, he said that, or she said that.
Well, like I said, I wouldn't say one of the worst it comes, I mean, London, Birmingham's by far the champion.
I guess I was just concerned that we're spending a lot of time talking about when KFC was being built and the new development, and we're talking a lot about air pollution at that point. But to build a new sports complex, which will hopefully bring a lot of people to the area, will naturally bring traffic, so that was my question, and that's why I was asking it.
Well, most of the people, if they do use that sports complex, like I said, would probably come from Eddes anyway.
Same for KFC.
Fitzwilliam have got their own facilities, Kinley have got their own football facilities and different things. So obviously, Hemsworth, if it...
Surely we're going to encourage people from the other areas to come? Because the places that are in Fitzwilliam and Kinley aren't owned by the precept players? You know, we don't pay for those, you know, Hemsworth Miners Welfare, Kinley Boys, they pay for that facility. So surely we're gonna be encouraging people from Fitzwilliam, is that what we're saying?
Well, it's not just Fitzwilliam, obviously, it's outside areas as well that we do. Well, you know, I wouldn't think you're gonna get as much mass traffic as what you'd get from 244 hours being developed outside the Woodlands. That, you know, that's the difference, what we love to...
It's an interesting concept then, that you're trying to build a complex in Hemsworth and expect people from Hemsworth to go to it, but how are you gonna make your money back? I don't understand, if you're only gonna have the local area coming...
There's over 44 football teams in Hemsworth now, including girls' and ladies' football teams. Over the last near four years, it's really progressed.
But they've got, they're playing already, aren't they, these people?
Yeah, they are, and they're having to go to Actworth and Shafton to play the games because Eddes can't cater for all these facilities. I've had meetings with Eddes Teddys, Eddes Town, we've had meetings with school, it was just had meetings with school to try and get extra facilities, we're struggling.
But I thought that one of the meetings that I went to about, obviously, the grant that we were getting, we're not just looking about people playing football, we're trying to do something for the young people that aren't just interested in football.
Yes, one of the things...
And what you're actually saying is, football, football, football.
No, no, what I'm saying is, if that sports facility is developed, it will be developed by money that Eddes Town Council can generate and any contributions we get from Sports England or outside bodies. It's in its infancy, it wasn't just a plan, it's been rough to put together, but obviously it's not been brought to table for councillors to decide.
So in that case, when are you going to actually have your consultation with all residents of Hemsworth?
Obviously, as soon as we get this court case out of way, we decide what's in that.
But you will actually invite people to do that?
Of course we will, on a development, on a development, if it's brought, something like that, then obviously there'll be consultation with members of the public.
Because it can't just be football, 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 because that's not addressing all of the antisocial behaviour that we're having in the future.
Well, I'm just mentioning to be an extract to take kids off the street, which, well...
That we've got a BMX track up at Fitzwilliam, and that's, that's not working, is it?
Well, there's a difference where a BMX track, and what that would be designed, like a Red Bull BMX track, and a junior BMX track would look like. But like I said, it's all like a consultation, yesterday.
Yeah, talking about the Kirby Road sports complex, are people in here aware of the Titanic battle that it was to actually get the complex contract? Because it took three and a half years, plenty of legal action and what have you, which were funded by local people, yeah? And at the end of the day, Tony Hudson sat there and said, "These contracts are commercially confidential. You've got your solicitors, we've got ours." And it took three and a half years, and an ICL judge ruled that they weren't commercially confidential, and they were released into the public domain.
Well, it went to a tribunal, ICL, ICL said release them.
They're talking about, they support...
The questions and answers. ICL released them, said release them, and then the Eddes Town Council at that time appealed it. It went to a tribunal, judge said release them.
That is a good subject, we're not very subject, it's complex.
They're not supposed to talk about the last thing, but it's all right for them to do it, but nobody else in the room can do it.
Because they want to say what you want to talk about, David. You can say what you want to talk about, why don't you just tell us what you want to think about then?
Can I ask about the Frankel report please? I'm really interested to know about that.
Frankel report?
Yeah.
Yeah, when Eddes Town Council got 11 independent councillors on, it was decided, a corporate decision was decided, because we had to sign the agreements of by the Labour-controlled council. And the worries that we had were, the worry that the 700, just one minute, I'll give you a figure.
I'm more interested in the report rather than your content.
Yeah, well, just I'm telling you why, we've got a report, boom. The 749,386 precept that at that time this council were collecting, nearly every year, every city we used up, they'd only got slightly investments. And when they had standard up council in 2011/12, they upped that, the reserves to about 100,000, and then it was upped every year that went on. So that 749,000, there weren't a lot left at that particular time. And we liked, for instance, Bonfire, we queried Bonfire, they were spending 16, sometimes 18,000 on a bonfire. When the figures were calculated, I think it came out to about eight and a half, nine thousand.
So what did the Frankel report show?
So what the Frankel report did, it came in and it basically recalculated all figures, looked at it, and then made an assessment that we, if we, for a strategic plan together, I'll give you an example, I think this council paid 8,000 pounds to Oracle for CCTV operations and cameras, who are paid £2 for fire and difficult things, about 78,000 pounds. And the list goes on. We sat down and we renegotiated all these contracts and saved council, it reaches a 30,000 pounds. And so that was just one of the things that the Frankel report highlighted towards us, that we implemented to save money for members of the public.
What did the Frankel report show, please?
I've just, I've just told you what it identified and what it advised us to do.
I've read it.
Yeah, and there's part of that that's redacted.
Part of it.
Yeah, part of that is what I've just mentioned now, because I've had a word with the Townsler before meeting, and some of it is related to confidential matters related to the sports complex. And there's things within that, within that that's been redacted that I can't mention tonight.
I've asked you the result of the Frankel report with regards to former Town Council, because...
And I've answered you.
Let me speak. I was in receipt of a leaflet, which I still have, stating that all the old councillors were on the take. So can you tell me, I have finished, what the Frankel report would show?
Can you share with that leaflet?
I can, I haven't got it tonight, but I've got it.
Well, when you, when you can share with that leaflet, then I expand a bit more on Frankel report, yeah?
Melanie, can you may and I'll put it on Fitzwilliam Park.
Right, are there any further questions?
I want, yeah. Mine's not related to Kirby Road, it's relating to the Wenger Boys concert. So originally, you were going to do parking in the farmers' fields. It's on your plans outside. That was because it was in August. Obviously due to Covid, it's changed and we're holding it next year supposedly, but that's going to be in June, the farmers' fields are gonna be full of crops. So what are your plans now for parking? Are there gonna be marshals to protect the little Valehead Park, car park, for people who still want to use that, because it gets quite busy? And will there be a clear-up in Valehead? Because obviously, for some people, it's a quick way through from the water park up through Valehead and across the Fields Home. So will you be also clearing up in Valehead Park?
So going back to your first question, 30th of August 2020, where Wenger Boys were originally planned for. Yeah, it was a bowl of football that we couldn't use, that field, for a couple of cars.
Yeah.
Parked over the Valehead car park. There were two downfalls to it. One was the crop that went in wouldn't be harvested till late, so we couldn't use it anyway, that was after seeing Green Box, who owns that field. And the other downside to it were, from highways department, Wakefield Safety, road safety, where they said that there's only one access in, and there needs to be two. So basically, that was, after a couple of weeks, it went to one side. The alternative then was to allow parking on Cemetery Road football fields and car park up there, as well as farmers, the El Travel Yard, we consent to Mr. Gore Deckles. Premier, Premier Fords said they could park there, and then there's another car park further up that we could ride to use that.
Do you think that will be adequate, if you're expecting like thousands to go in?
Well, I think, I think, I think there'll be enough parking on Cemetery Road, you probably get a thousand cars up there.
Cemetery Road?
Yeah, on the football field, don't forget, there's three football fields up there.
You'll allow them to go on the football fields?
What about...
Yeah, in June, in June, on Friday, 10th of June, then there'll be no football matches on. It's just a matter of parking from the starting concert until the concert's finished.
Are we gonna tell...
And then you can get, maybe 350 cars in farmers' car park, that we've been allowed to use, and the El Travel Yard, and Premier.
But what about the people that live on Cemetery Road, the people that live up there?
There's access to it and now, or football fields.
Yeah, and that's a nightmare.
There's access to it, and you're saying what about the people that live up there? You're talking how many cars?
Not everybody will come, not everybody will come by cars, and we'll get a lift, so we'll come on trains, we'll come on bus.
Well, what you're on about then?
But there's, Eddes Town Council can provide bike facilities.
You've just said 10 minutes, I'm about parking up there.
They're not parking on Cemetery Road now, they're going up Cemetery Road to park on Cemetery Road, football fields.
Yeah, so, well, there's people that live up there.
Yeah.
So you've got all them cars going back...
The 60 to 100 cars goes up there on a Saturday and Sunday when they're playing football.
And it's chaos.
So once, once the...
60 to 100?
Once the, once the parked up, that's it. So I think it'll just be a matter of a period of time, from whatever to whatever. We have to, an issue that has been mentioned, but obviously, this plan's, this plan's, this, this plan is in its infancy. At Thursday's meeting, there'll be a committee put together to take it forward. So all these little arrangements that you're asking for questions for, will be answered, and put together, after Thursday.
Do you think it might have been prudent to hold this meeting after that meeting then? Because that, it is on the agenda, I believe.
Well, if you come Thursday, you'll be able to ask a question.
But we were invited today to get our questions answered.
What was the meeting Thursday? There's a question time on Thursday.
What are they about?
So can you tell us? Can you tell us how many tickets have been sold?
What?
The tickets have been, you know, re-regular again now, tickets, and they'll be sold via Ticketmaster professionally, on the website.
How many, how many tickets have been sold?
Well, there's been a lot, there's had re-boughts.
How many?
I don't know, I haven't got a clue.
So we paid 10,000 pounds for tickets for the Wenger Boys, we don't know how many tickets have been sold?
Just one minute, just one minute, Sean can answer that question.
I just received mail, were they asking how many tickets we had? So basically, people had paid for, now couldn't wait, as if they was going to, if you asked tomorrow, how many good pair of tickets, we've sold 200.
200 tickets?
200 tickets.
And we're selling these tickets at 30 pounds each?
Plus 2 pound.
Yeah, the 30, 30 pound, 32 pound, we admin charged, which Ticketmaster will charge anyway, and 15 for, for juniors.
Has there been a business case put together, for me back on my business?
Yes, yeah, yeah, there has, yeah.
And you're confident that you can make the money back?
If Eddes Town Council sells 2,000 tickets at 32 pounds, it brings in revenue 64,000.
We're talking about a big celebration weekend, a bank holiday weekend, people have plans now. The people know what they're doing at the bank holiday next year already, if you sold 200 tickets.
Yeah, but it's not just what people, people here had priorities about tickets previously. This now, by going on Ticketmaster, will be open to, you know, countrywide.
And how much will the event cost, Eddes Town Council?
With Wenger Boys...
The growth cost is in the region of 80,000 pounds. So as the Chairman says, I think that's your figure to break even, is 2,200 pounds. Because of that 32 pounds, five pounds lies back across, so the substantial figure the council collects for each ticket is 25 pounds. So to recap, the growth cost is in the region of 80,000 pounds, it might be something like 79, we call it 80,000.
So if we sell 2,500 tickets, we've brought...
Breaking you on there, about.
Yeah.
But you just said you're hoping people come from outside.
Yes.
So that's gonna produce cars?
Yeah, but people, people tech, probably transport, will go, you know, they'll go on buses.
On a bank holiday? Who's this event for?
It's a celebration, years ago, we had an hotel, years ago, we used to have a spectacular. And the Town Council's not bringing anything special on for years.
But that was for the local community, wasn't it?
Yeah, well, this is for local community, but at the end of the day, what's going to be the sale? It's up to locals to support it. If they don't want to support it, like you've just said, a lot of plans are going away anyway, so obviously then, it's up... So obviously then it's up to people to come and support it. But it was for locals, they got the first opportunity.
Yeah, but lots of people, wasn't it?
Just a minute, just a minute, just a minute, put your hand up please, yes, Ellen.
Who, who decided on Venger Boys at first place?
It was, it was put to independent councillors, our own councillors, and our, our own councillors, I think there were only one, uh, councillor that had a concern, and that was Alan Dodson.
It was who?
Alan Dodson, the corporate decision was voted on there, the rest of the councillors voted to support it.
What hand was it?
Alan, I think you did, yeah, it is not being supported.
Was this before votes were being recorded though? Because we don't, you haven't recorded?
Yeah, votes, well, unless somebody asks for it to be recorded, it's, uh, you know, but it is put down, uh, that it will carry, it was a corporate, it was a corporate decision.
So just to recap my understanding, because I'm getting a bit lost, so it's eighty thousand pounds it's going to cost, it's happening in May next year?
Now, June.
June next year, so that's what, ten months away, and you sold two hundred tickets?
No, that, that, the two hundred tickets that were sold were for the concert that were, that were going to be on on thirty first of August, two thousand and twenty.
No, they're the ones that haven't cancelled their tickets, is that right? Is that right?
Yeah, they're the ones that, that's, you know, that's for pay.
And if I wanted to buy a ticket today, could I buy a ticket?
No, because we've got to finalize that now on Thursday.
So the tickets will be available on sale from Friday?
No, it will be, it's got to be, Ticketmaster might give you another four or five days. And then it'll be advertised properly and Ticketmaster will promote it.
And?
Just, just one minute.
Yeah, uh, yeah, you said both our recalling, but you quite clearly said the councillor Dodson was the only one that voted against it. Why would you remember that, that you wouldn't remember councillor Westmore?
Because everybody else voted for it.
The councillor Westmore was quite clearly a saint, didn't he?
Well, all I'm telling you, on that particular night, the only one that questioned it was Alan, am I right, Alan?
Yeah.
Well, that's up to town clerk, if, if I asked for it, for it to be recorded, it would be recorded.
So just back to, sorry, I don't know, the lady's question there, she said, would this, um, uh, go on, Kirby Road. Will this Venger Boys concert go to public consultation before you spend eighty thousand pounds?
It's already been decided by council.
But so it never went to public consultation?
There were a meeting like, like we had here tonight, and everybody agreed that, that, you know, as a celebration, uh, that particular town, thirty first of August, that, that, uh, we, we, you know, with, with this concert, and like we said, we can sell, we can sell, we can sell over four thousand tickets because that.
You can sell a million if people want to go.
No, you can't sell a million, I'm talking, that we can cater for all of them.
No, but what I'm saying is, it, it seems like it's a bit all of them, yeah?
We can cater, we can cater for safety and everything's been put in place, we've saved aspects and count. License, licenses, bits of proof of Wakefield council for that particular day, there's a fee. And if we sell four thousand tickets, you know, then obviously we're way in front. But we can get in excess of four thousand people in, in.
But back to our point on the business case.
So, so my point is to you, because if you worry about the eighty thousand, then once we sell two and a half thousand, we, we drop even over in front.
If you sold two hundred?
Don't forget, we've got, we've got catering, we've got catering to come in. Because at pandemic, everything was stopped. We were cancelled for now.
But you've made a decision.
The contracts were still signed and they were still in place.
You're answering questions, I'm not asking. You've decided to spend eighty thousand pounds on the say of a group of councillors without putting that to the public opinion. I'm sitting in here now and I'm not hearing anybody say, can you let, can you let me finish, please? Just have a second, courtesy. So these people here are all looking round and saying, we don't want the Venger Boys. Did you go out and speak to people outside of the group of councillors? Obviously councillor Dodson was against it, which I totally agree. Like, did you speak to anyone about this? Did you build a business case looking at what the public would want? Because eighty thousand pounds is a hell of a lot of money.
It's not just the Venger Boys that's coming, this, this several artists.
I under, I understand, we just used to be.
Yeah, this several artists who've got the show.
But you had no interest already?
What they're, what they're looking for thirty pound a ticket is probably one of the cheapest that Venger Boys have ever put on. They've had, they've had three number ones, I'm sure it will be well supported. And the councillors that procured it at that, at that particular point, was a corporate decision.
Why, why did you have that?
Worked it out, and two and a half thousand tickets to break even, we couldn't see a problem with that.
I'm going to make one last point and then I'm going to let everyone else answer the question, because I'm quite passionate about this.
Yeah, just one minute.
Sorry.
Now, now, I still have a ten year question, I'm going to come to you, Steve, yes, Steve. I mean, you know, in June usually, you don't, you don't get to every rainfall in June. I mean, it's a matter of crossing that thing when we get to it, we've got parking facilities for about six, seven hundred cars anywhere we are, Cemetery Road. And we've got to, you know, obviously we've got to, uh, look at that on, after the meeting on Thursday.
Yeah, you've got to.
Yeah, just one minute, just one minute, yeah, yeah, just one minute, Pete, yeah, I'll take it from this way, then I'll come to you, Pete, sorry, I didn't see you.
Can I just point out, you're saying that thirty, thirty two pound is the cheapest to go and see someone? I've actually been and seen Gabrielle in Liverpool, and it's not, and it, and it's cost me thirty, thirty two pounds. So, you know, and she's a big artist that you get in, so I, I think you've got that one wrong.
Yeah, but you see, the thing is, when you went to see Gabrielle in Liverpool, how many thousand were there?
Well, they were actually a small select, because I did a, a meet and greet with her.
But I'm saying, how many to do? Because that, that, obviously that group is going to price, what one's selling, these are going to be. If it like a cheque of a hundred, this ten thousand, we're still chatting sixty, seventy pound a ticket. So, yes, Pete, sorry, I didn't see you.
How much would it cost to get shook of it?
Yeah, good question.
I understand it, I understand it, Pete, when you voted for it, when you voted for it, but this is.
Idea.
That, yeah, so all I can say is.
But not now.
No, all I can say is, after that, the contracts were signed and were contracted to what we've got with an agent to with Venger Boys.
All I'm asking, Alan, how much have we got to pull out?
We've moved the two deposits, the Venger Boys deposit is in the region of five thousand five hundred.
Yeah.
And the, um, Apple statement artist thing that the chairman mentioned, his deposit is two thousand five hundred.
And then, just a minute, you know, you've also got contracts with all the acts, Alan. Yeah, so you've got, you've got the acts, you've got the acts to make us, they're booked, they've reserved that for that, for that day.
Jim, I know you think I'm being hard, but I'm not. Now, what's this going to cost? If all was wrong, and I've got a funny feeling about this, this won't cancel.
But Pete, you can't say in August, you know, coming up, that, that you support it.
You didn't say in August.
When it, when it, when it, no, it was going to be August, two thousand and twenty. This, this was originally raised, I think, in July or August, two thousand and nineteen. It was well before, yeah. And everybody were happy for it to progress, all figures were footballing, all figures were footballing, everybody were happy for it to progress.
But why can't you?
That's it, just, just one minute, just one minute, that's it.
Can I just ask, how long are you going to go on with this before you decide it's not going to be a good go? How long are you going to keep it going, see how many tickets you sell?
It's on, it's on, it's on regender for Thursday, it's on regender for Thursday, don't forget, you've got, you've got contracts to sort out. You've had, you've had regender for over a week, Alan.
I know, I've read it.
There's no need to be rude to people.
I'm sure the whole community would support you if you said, let's get local acts on. Like Normanton Gala, they use local acts and it's free of charge and it's really well attended, it's brilliant. I'm sure if you just said, look, we'll cut our losses, we'll move on, we'll get local acts, we'll pay the five hundred pounds fee. And people will pay to see local acts, even if it's our town ticket.
Yes.
So, uh, please, I'm interested, because I, I'm, I'm trying to sort this, because I don't want the community to have a massive loss. If, if, if you were to decide at this town council meeting, that you were going to diss the Venger Boys and go with local acts, local club people, like Chelsea, people like that. I'm sure people would support you and pay Stephen.
Well, can I just say this, you've just mentioned Chelsea Radford.
I know, she's coming, I know.
Yeah, she's on, but all local acts are back on Venger Boys and, and Madness.
Well, exactly.
Yeah, but Madness, Madness get three or four thousand to their concerts anyway. You know, I mean, they're really well known, there's a podium, they've built Nottinghamshire, uh, stadiums, and in Peterborough, and in Dorrit, you want to sell that four thousand. You know, uh, for, for Scarban, that's what we are going to do, but we can't do it yet. We've got a video that's going to come out that's being done by promoter, there's anything to go into place, oh. But, you know, we're only just a matter of pandemic, but we're only just getting things back together. I mean, coming up, we've got, uh, on sixteenth, uh, sorry, twenty first of October, we've got a local street in here, we've provided a tea for them. And then we've got a grassland concert, tickets, you know, people have been given tickets up there, looking forward to it. On six, on sixteenth of December, we've got, uh, a car for, 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 uh, Sydney City and Denver's. We've got a bingo and a quiz, we've promoted things, just, just let me, just let me do this, I know, right, and let me finish. And what I'm saying is, I'm just trying to put forward that we've been held back for last few months, and it's just a matter of getting things together now. That's all it is. I mean, Steve's here, he's a former councillor, Steve will be at Venger Boys, Steve wanted to help promote it, he thought it was a good idea. You know, I mean, uh, yeah, all I'm saying, all I'm saying is, at that particular time, and, and we've looked at it again now, it's on the agenda to get a working party together to promote it. I don't think it could do a massive job to, to sell two and a half thousand tickets, which, which makes us break even. Then as bonus is, we'll have, uh, a beer tent, we'll have catering units inside, they'll be paying three or four hundred pounds to stand. So that's a, a bonus to us.
Do you think you might be worth conveying that to the public? Because if, if you're going to have to pay Venger Boys such a fortune and you're not going to break even, but you're saying Madness, because I've seen them and I know they're very good. Maybe look at your, what I'm trying to say to you, look at your options.
Well, there's a meeting on Thursday, and basically we have looked at this option, we've spoken to agent, and obviously agent, like Alan says, agents contracted ED, they need paid one way or the other anyway. And so we've looked at it all, and I don't think once these tickets are promoted by Ticketmaster, we'll have a problem getting, generating two and a half thousand sales. Especially, you know, local people, I think, once they start seeing pictures and they see a video or who's going to perform, or a full day's entertainment, or, or fifteen quid or, is it under sixteen, or fifteen pounds? Or under sixteen concessions, what, from ten o'clock in the morning till nine o'clock on a night? I honestly don't think for this village of Embsworth, it'd be a bad thing. I mean, Wakefield, uh, in East Jeffers, I spoke to an inn, she was quite excited about the Liverpool town. And lots of other dancers outside this, we've mentioned it, but obviously because of pandemic, it's been shelved. But now it's a matter of resurrecting it again and promoting it to try and get people to.
Are we keeping this spot?
Yeah, well, once that, that meeting's on Thursday, open with a promotion video and everything, we'll go on to town council's website, so everybody will be informed. It will also be printed newsletter that's been printed next week to go around everybody's letterbox, to update everybody what, you know, what's, what's been around. I'll take yours in a minute, Steve, but chit chat, yeah, well.
Why don't we, why don't people in the councils look at giving it a certain amount of time for ticket sales? And if it doesn't, call off, pull out?
Well, that's what we can do, we decide that on Thursday, we've still got that option.
Right, yeah.
Yes.
What percentage are Ticketmaster taking from the, you know, doing summon of the tickets?
I think it's usually about twelve percent, isn't it, Alan?
So that could.
Yeah, so we're still waiting for that, because obviously if you want how many tickets and how big an event is what they're promoting. But it'll not be much more than, uh, you know, they have been charged, but we're putting on two or three pounds.
So just about two, two pounds?
It means that I would imagine so, we haven't got the figures yet, but Wakefield Ticketmaster will come back to us.
Will you relay them to us when, um, you know?
Yeah, I, I, there's a little bit down later, I mean, it'll be very cold in the night, you can have that, no problem.
Thank you.
Yes, Jane.
Um, I'll tell you the reason why I supported Venger Boys, um, because we talk about, you know, we've got the park, we've got playing groups.
Yeah, we've got mine.
We talk about pensioners, we've got a lot of them coming on for pensioners. But there's a mid, middle gap, that, that preset payers are like everybody else. And it's like, you're damned if you do, you're damned if you don't, there's a middle gap, your, your twenties to forties, that would love to see something like the Venger Boys. Because whenever we had anybody like that in Embsworth, and I think. I think that. Can you hear, you can hear me anyway. And, and that's where I was when I voted for it, which were a valid point, because there's that middle age that are preset payers. All right, the technicalists took Water Park, the technical wherever took parts, what do they get out of it? The good at pubs and clubs, it would, I just thought, but Venger Boys took on, which, when they go on their, if you go on their website, they do sell a lot of tickets themselves. So, um, you can sell, you can sell no tickets up to a certain point, and then everybody's does, because they're good to skate, nice, they're good to leads, and they pay more money. And that, and I just thought it was such a special place in Embsworth, why not? We have the, the seaside event, we have Bonfire, but I'm just talking about that middle, that mid, middle age gap, and that's what I, I thought. I thought at the first, yeah, the money, it is a lot of money, but looking at the Venger Boys and how they sell the tickets as well. So if local people, I mean, I know we're going to, we, I did, uh, the agenda, we did agree that local people would come first. And then obviously out there, they would make their tickets up. And, and that's where I was on it, and I just thought I'd have to explain that, why I voted for it.
Can I just come in as a middle age?
Yeah.
Well, uh, Normanton Town Council do a gala every year, have you ever been?
Sorry?
Normanton Town Council do a gala every year in the park, it's free to everybody.
We just, we just have it free for, uh, seaside.
What, Normanton Town Ga- uh, Town Gala?
I just, Jane, can we talk about Android?
Uh, excuse me, I'm using example here. So the example that I'm giving is that they use local act and it doesn't cost the preset payer, it doesn't cost you to pay the volume, pay the pre, preset. So you shouldn't have to pay again for that entertainment. And that is what I think is a good beacon of an example. That's all I'm suggesting, and that's through my knowledge.
Yeah, but obviously, if you're getting acts like Madness and Venger Boys, then obviously, you know, they're, they're exceptional, so, you know, it would matter. When you've got to understand that, you know, it's, we, we look at it nearly two years ago, that this was put together in July, two thousand and nineteen, August, two thousand and nineteen. And, and everybody were buzzing that we never expected, you know, this pandemic. Uh, and, and so, yeah, and I can understand Pete's, Pete's feelings, but when you look at it realistically, uh, you know, on selling two and a half thousand tickets to break even, we've already sold two hundred. We've probably kicked two or three hundred, uh, people's money back, that might come in by a ticket. Uh, so, yeah, but don't forget, once, once we knew there was a pandemic in, uh, in what, November, December, and then we're in lockdown from March, everything shook that one, it would go to anything.
Can I just ask you, are you actually looking what else is going to be on when you're looking to own this? Because you might have Leeds Fest, obviously, it's the Queen's Jubilee.
Yeah, well, that's why, that's why we switched it to September June, so that we didn't clash with Leeds Fest and other festivals and Sheffield and that. That's why we picked that day, and it, and it what happened, we picked that day because it's the Queen's Platinum Jubilee. So, you know, it were, it were like extra special. I mean, I know, uh, Ellen mentioned on her website not long since, and you're showing some pictures, when you do that spectacular and different kind of things. I mean, from Embsworth even then, you spend maybe, oh, between ten and fifteen thousand pounds, you know, setting a spectacular up. We have long jumping two hundred foot up the ladder, you know, it, well, it must special in the pop community.
I asked about that, there was a spectacular, and I was shocked actually, how much it cost. That was with the old Labour council, when I went to them in two thousand and fifteen, we did a gala, first gala, they'd seen in twenty years. And I, I was told that last spectacular had cost twenty thousand.
So, you know, twenty thousand, what, fifteen, sixteen years ago, you know what I mean? So, you know, and don't forget, that's, there's no return on that, we, we are going to get a return on it. So, I mean, realistically, if we do take it into four or five thousand, then it, you know, it's some of pop community and it's special, yes, Steve?
Um, obviously, I, I supported it, and I'll, I'll say that, obviously, when it first came up, uh, along with everyone around here, except for Ellen. Um, it was a good idea at the time, but I think, I'm going to say my honest opinion, that it's not a good idea.
Well, like I said, contracts are signed, it's limited to that, and the people. Well, like I said, contracts are signed, it's a bit into that, and the people are corporate, they can do whatever they want. Yes, I'll take your question, please.
So you put it to Thursday, second of June, which is the start of a four day weekend. First...
It's Friday.
No, uh, Friday, third of June.
Yeah, it's the third of June, Alan. It's Friday, yeah, sorry, Friday, third of June.
That's the second bank holiday, so you're not considering the fact that people could go off on Thursday till Sunday and not attend it? Because it's a four day weekend, so for workers, the demographic that you're talking about, those middle people, will finish work on Wednesday. And what have to return to work on Monday, because it's going to be, a spring bank holiday is Thursday, second of June. Friday is the Platinum Jubilee bank holiday, and then you've got the Saturday, Sunday.
Well, because it's bank holiday and obviously, we promote this and advertise it properly, people up and down and say, oh, it's bank holiday. I'm going to, we get some tickets for Wenger Boys and stop local, or people in Lincoln might want to come here to Wenger Boys. It's, it swings around about, isn't it?
You, you don't think they're going to look at four days and think, I'm going to pick either four days away or four days doing them up?
Well, there'll be other things, there'll be other things going on that, you know, up and down country, that people could say, it's actually safe to go there, you know, the, oh, because... So, so what do you do then? Do you stay, do you stay in the town, what, not, not do anything, not, not create anything on?
Well, you said plans have changed due to Covid, so you've had to amend your plans, but now what you're saying is you're not going to amend them again over this new information?
We amended plans from, so that we didn't clash with Sheffield concerts and Leeds round A and B concerts.
And now you're flashing me four day weekends for workers?
Yeah, but people, it's anyone who's escaped, that's might come here, it's anyone who's in Blackpool might come here, or will travel from wherever. Which gives them the opportunity to stay here for a couple of days.
Mine, 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 mine.
Well, it's, it's a mine anyway.
Mine, mine.
Yeah. Yes, Bee.
When the spectators were held at the water park?
They weren't held on the water park, are they? Am I right, Alan? Held on the water park, Bee?
No, the spectators down at the water park were held in the water park. I don't manage, I don't manage it.
What, you need seats, Harry, Ben?
No, no, the big spectators were hiding.
Right.
And what, what, uh, it's chucked, chucked, warned me about somewhere. This car parking, you said you've already lost the feel. Now, what we, uh, the first year were absolutely chock a block. All the roads were blocked, coppers come up to me, who's in charge of this lot? What council did you, uh, let it to us? I said, I'm sorry, I, we never imagined this would happen. The following year, we put, uh, Park and Ride up at Grammar's School for them to come down.
Well, that might be a good idea, I think. We can discuss that on Thursday, we can put that in program Thursday.
But what happened was, the weather was disastrous. It wiped us out.
Yeah.
All I'm saying is with that car parking, please listen to me.
Yeah, but I'm saying that too, we could probably take, uh, that ride, yes, Steve? And then just, has anyone got any more questions on this concert? Which obviously, we'll give more details after Thursday and update it on that. But like I said, we spoke to agent, we spoke to promoters, um, we need to sell two and a half thousand tickets and it's not going to cost preset payers anything. We'll make money on your stalls, on your, on your, your, uh, food and your beer tent.
And what happens if it doesn't make? If it doesn't break even?
If, if, if we, if we take it, if we take in it, uh, four or five thousand pounds or whatever, it's still better than what Embsworth Town Council spent fifteen years ago, twenty thousand pounds.
I've not heard about it.
It's spectacular, but it's, so we're just trying to, we're just trying to do something for, you know, for, for members of the public. And they're living really just different to what's been done. Yes, Ellen?
The more you go nearer the concert, obviously, I, you don't have to pay more, uh, compensation to them if you don't pull out. You know, if you pull out now, is it going to only be whatever you've just said?
No, I think, I think... I mean, obviously, if, if we didn't pull out now for all these acts, we'd be breaching contract. So they won't just walk away with their feet. Because obviously, it's on Wenger Boys website now, they're booked here on, on Thursday, Friday, third of June. So if they can't get another booking to replace that, it just depends what they're going to lose. Don't forget, we've got, we've got a fantastic team at Wenger Boys, uh, be- because, uh, David, we're on. And, uh, it was, I think it was on Monday. Uh, Friday, Saturday and Sunday, they go out for more money. But what they will rely on is selling the merchandise before they perform. You know, CDs, pictures, side orchards and, and, and what like.
So have we, have we not taken out any insurance in case if we have to cancel? Because at that time, you've, you've mentioned Covid and everything else, and you, you've had to cancel, put it on hold once or twice due to Covid. So have you not...
It's only, it's only been put on hold once, but I think Alan will answer that, dear.
There is event cancellation insurance in place, but that's for things like, uh, whether Covid, national wind, that sort of thing. There isn't insurance in place for the sale of tickets, that's a commercial decision for the council to make, a different one. As, as people have said tonight, you've set a stage, you say, if you sold X amount, how this stage continue? Or if you've sold Y, maybe not, so. But in response to the late cancellation, yes, that's in, but it will be placed, but it's in the process of insurance, yeah.
Yeah. So if there are no more questions on Wenger Boys then, we will move on to Embsworth Water Park.
Can I, can I just come in here, Jim, about, about South Kirby complex? If you lose the court...
You mean, you mean Kirby Road complex?
Kirby Road complex.
Kirby Road complex, yeah.
If you lose the court case, what's going to happen? If you lose the court case, full stop.
Well, obviously, we've got to be careful what, uh, what we say with this, because it is an award of an high court. But, uh, the basic thing with, with this argument is, in, on twenty first of July two thousand and twelve. That was the date that the developer should have completed and paid Embsworth Town Council one million seven hundred and fifty thousand. Because don't forget, this deal wasn't subject in the grant of planning permission. So after that date, written into the contracts, there are clauses that state that they have to pay two point, uh, two percent of a bank's bank as it accumulated. Which I think at the moment is about three hundred and eighty thousand to go on top of that. That's our argument. Uh, this has gone to court because on three occasions, this council asks all to pay and complete. And each time, it's failed to do that. And so what we did then, with the advice of a QC, we, uh, rescinded the contracts. Every, every step of this council's technique, it's been through top legal advice, uh, QC that deals with contractual disputes. And, uh, then obviously, then what the developer did is, he sent proceedings, uh, in place and insurance with, with a claim. Which were, you know, uh, probably, probably if you like, because we'd asked him to complete three times. And then if we're claiming place, take us to court to complete, so, you know, make, make your own conclusion with that one. Uh, if the judge decides that the contracts are going to be completed, then so construction will have to pay this council one point seven million pound. Because fifty thousand pound will already pay, I think, in a different deal. Uh, so, you know, that's, you know, that, that's ba- basically where it'll be, the cost will be decided then after case. Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Yeah. It's Melanie, isn't it? Yeah.
If, um, you win the vote, what will happen to this community, the, the, and...
I can't go into details with that because, uh, that's a separate issue to this court case that's going on in March. So, I, I, you know, basically, advice that we've been told is that, uh, that they'll be on hold until after March.
So to clarify, you cannot tell us what will happen to this communication?
All I can tell you at this moment in time, that this facility and Sandygate is registered and owned by this council. So then it's up to so construction to take further proceedings to deal with this. Steve?
You went through a public visit, uh, for last meeting, but no mention of Ian? Where is he?
Ian's resigned from council, uh, he's had personal, uh, and health issues within his family, so... I mean, you know, he, he has mentioned it over the last few weeks, that, uh, that he's, uh, that he's been struggling with that, so, you know, obviously decided. I mean, one of the things is, which is, I think it's publicly known, he was fired on November last year, which did tell things. And, uh, he'd been going through all of it, so he decided to throw his ticket. But obviously, that's his decision. Maxine, yeah?
Are, are you allowed to tell the people, um, what the solicitor gave you the chance, the chances of you winning this court case?
Yeah, the solicitor said to us in a meeting, which, uh, I don't think there's any problem in releasing that, is there, Ellen? No? Then, it, which, which is a good thing, with a sixty body chance of winning it.
Uh, it was sixty five.
What, what, Ellen?
It was, it was sixty, but when I asked him to clarify that, as, as lawyers sometimes do, they prepare a case, sit on the fence. And his response was, it doesn't really matter what the number is, what matters is, is maybe you've got a better chance of winning than losing, which the council has. And the way he phrased it exactly was, the council has a reasonable chance of win.
Was that the solicitor or your barrister?
That was a barrister.
So if there are no more questions on that, then we'll move on to council's conduct.
Hey, just Helen wanted to...
Is that just, uh, is, I think, just the line from Town Council or the district as well?
As far as I, I know, Ellen, uh, he, he wrote an email, which obviously, anyone that resides right to town clerk, he, he passed it on to chairman. And it, it's only related to Embsworth Town Council, more up to the district than that's to him, you know?
I, I wanted to ask something about the water park before you get on.
Yeah, yes, I know, that's my problem.
First of all, can you just confirm, is H, Embsworth Town Council, are you registered for the AT?
Yes.
Yes. In that case, obviously, I've looked at your accounts, um, and it is, you spend a lot of money in cash, on cash payments. Which I can understand for certain things, but there's five items of quite a lot of money that you've actually done with cash. Uh, you've got eleven thousand...
Are you talking about the cash table that, that's...
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, I'll, I'll put it on to Ellen, those, uh, those council accounts.
Just there were a few petty in one, in one, yeah, in one particular month, there were a few petty cash payments. And we just had to be one more, for example, to get some deliveries at the lakeside, some firms want cash on delivery, want payment.
Uh, I, I'll, I'll question that because obviously, the same as eleven thousand one hundred and eighty pounds on concrete. Now, a company to take that amount of cash and to pay it into a bank, a bank. Anything over five thousand pounds would be asking where that money's come from.
We didn't pay that much of money on that, we paid it over a thousand pounds, would...
I've got it here.
Money laundering, regulations.
Yeah, I've got it here on the eleventh of July, you made a payment of a hundred and eighty. On the fifteenth of July, you made a payment of two thousand two hundred and twelve and eighty. And on the nineteenth of July, you made a payment of eight thousand seven hundred and eighty eight.
Those are petty cash payments, those are payments in the cash book. Um, if I just, I don't support people with accounting procedures, but every transaction is listed in the cash book. Whether it's a direct debit, a cheque, or a max payment, or a petty cash payment.
But it doesn't give you the person who you've made the payments to?
Well, I can assure you there was not an eight thousand pound cash payment to anyone. Uh, principally because if it was a thousand, well, first of all, I sign all cheques. And I can say on the record now, there's no way on God's earth, I would sign a cheque, give you that eight thousand pounds.
Who supplied your concrete?
I've tried, I don't know, but I think what the confusion, I think one of the, the petty cash payments, they're, they're related to sound a bit right. Not ideal, but normal, and there's sometimes peace, but, uh, I think the principal confusion is being over the phrase cash book. Everything in the cash book isn't, I get a bunch of five pound bills. It's direct debits coming, but literally, every transaction or every receipt and payment is listed in the cash book. An eight thousand pound max payment would be, that would be in the cash book. A cheque for a five pound would be in the cash book.
Who you've made those payments to?
It's what, sorry?
You don't list who you've made those payments to.
Well, it should be, it should, it should be on there. Yeah, yeah.
Like the, you paid nine thousand nine hundred and ninety nine ninety nine for the marquee, which again, there's, there's no name of who...
But I don't know the firm, it's, he's called Gower, so if it's, if it's on there, it should be on there.
Well, it, it's not.
It doesn't appear to be a title.
Also, the quad bike that was purchased, that was for a thousand pounds. Again, nothing, no need. So all, all I'm wanting to know is, are you actually buying these through a third party?
No.
Or is the ca- have you actually got invoices or receipts?
Yes.
Because obviously, you'll need those for your insurance purchases.
Yes, we have, uh, we have books of account for everything. And obviously, books of account, good line, and records, and I think got invoice. And that's what, that's what I check, that's what the staff check, and that's what twice a year they turn over, so, and next year.
Right, so if I send, uh, freedom of information, you'll actually be able to tell me?
I can provide references all day long, yes.
Okay.
You've got all that, yeah, I'll just, yeah.
So just to clarify that point, then although it's entered in cash book, it's not paid in cash. Regarding concrete, yeah, the, the, for that phase, it's entered in cash book and cheque. For, for the concrete, you would have got a local firm at Kinsley. But I think that eleven thousand would include other invoices, but it's probably just put down as that. We never paid eleven thousand pounds for concrete, no. So, but, you, 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 listen, you don't have to, you don't have to put a freedom of information request in. If you just notify us, speak to Alan, and if you come in, he'll get all the information you want, he'll be able to show you it. And I guarantee you, we would not go any further without wanting to turn extra money to, if, if we were paying that amount out in cash. Like Alan says, everything over a thousand pounds has to go via backsie cheque. And he'll show you all receipts related to that, to come to play back on it.
The reason I, I, the reason I looked at that was because in the meeting on the fifth of August. You've actually stated that the concrete cost you two thousand whatever. And this is when you were discussing how much the concrete would cost for the building that you just putting up.
Yeah, like I said, if you're going to us, we haven't, and providing with a list to what you want. Don't put in a freedom of information, come into office for twenty minutes and he'll let you have a look at that.
We, we have a, we have a sub finance meeting with councillors, all councillors now, because all councillors are on all committees. We have a sub finance meeting where all the payments are made, the bathrooms that get paid, and all the houses can see. And the receipts are there for Alan to show us when we question it, because we question things and we, we expect Alan to show us. And, and tell us exactly what's been paid out for that total. And it can be one firm with different, you know, different, uh, receipt, uh, invoices, so it's collectively. But we all scrutinise that, and that's always...
Can I just ask, how much was the concrete for the base?
I think there were two famous mates for concrete, uh, and it probably told between two and two and a half thousand.
What, for this new, for the building that you did looking at, what you did putting up?
It's quite spinnish.
It's spinnish?
Yeah. And that will probably drop off, in fact, that concrete was, uh, on the shoot line.
That concrete was, were delivered in March or beginning of April.
Yeah, these and before that.
Yeah, but, yeah, what I'm saying, i- if they, if those invoices have come after that, it's because it's been on account. And so the invoices add to...
July nineteenth.
July nineteenth?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, yeah, I'll tell you what, that is, that, if we were paying on a bathroom, that were all concrete in front of, uh, you know, where it was all been up, central road. In front of Lakeside Gap, all that were, were all re-concrete, looked at, with bolts, with everything, because it, because it was, it was just, uh, red shale that went down. So that's what that would be for. And if we're paying cash, I guarantee you, it would have been on that through. Yes?
Just fed it to Alan's comments about the petty cash, um, I'm not talking about cash book, I'm definitely talking about petty cash. I actually, um, wrote to the clerk, he was very kindly provided with the information I asked for. But I'm still concerned, there's a lot of money going out of Embsworth Town Council in... But I'm still concerned, there's a lot of money going out of Thames Town Council in cash. So, for example, May, I believe it was, there was one thousand seven hundred pounds in petty cash. So, on your accounts online, for the public to see, all it says is petty cash, the amount and where that's going. Things that were paid for on that petty cash, which, like I say, the clerk kindly provided me, was window cleaner. I pay my window cleaner by backs, I'm not sure why Thames Town Council don't. Provisional licence, plants, stamps, birthday presents, food supplies, work done on the beach shop, a sausage roll warmer, it's like, I think it is, Generation Go, portable steps, paint. There's a lot of things that's coming out of petty cash that really should be paid by cash, by card.
If they're all small amounts, at that particular time, when the pandemic was on.
Yeah, I know in the pandemic, we were all encouraged to use cards.
Yeah, but, but at that time, we had things delivered, and like town clerk said, they wanted cash on delivery to deliver these things. I think a lot of them are also one of these smaller items, but there's receipts.
Not really, you've got three hundred...
There's receipts there to cover everything, which is not a problem, I'm sure, like, turns this lady, if you'd like to, I will work with Alan.
I've got the information here, but...
No, but I'm saying, you're best not coming in and looking at, looking at receipts.
I don't care what it's for, I'm a client.
And then the other thing is, just let me try and explain. Every week, we sign a cheque, and this, I think they get a hundred and eighty, a hundred and ninety pounds, like what they call petty cashier, because like he says, the window cleaner prefers to be paid in cash. He gives a receipt, he knows that, it's all recorded. And, and there's other, there's other slight, small amounts like that that comes out of that. Like, I think they get tea and coffee, or different other things that comes out of that. If we have a visitor that comes in, or somebody that wants to visit us, you know, we'll make coffee, we'll make coffee today for people that's coming here. It's things like that that we pay for.
But you're buying things on average already.
No, with, everything is receipted. Some is the eightieth or ninetieth birthday, we present to the flowers or a bottle of whisky. One of the girls goes over to supermarket Tesco, because they're spot local, and they'll pay for it by cash, but they'll put the receipt in, and it's a VAT receipt that they get from Tesco, so it goes through books. They're, they're the only ones that I know and that Alan knows. But like I said, if there's anything that you've got specific...
I'm not asking you.
Please, please, get in touch with Alan, and, and come in, come in and tell me.
You're answering a question I'm not asking. My question is not what you're spending it on, it's why you're not using cards and back payments like other businesses are.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll hand over to councillor Eales.
Right, I'll just give you for instance then, down at the cafe bar, Potter's Pies, they give them pies, they want cash. Now, the cafe bar has a float, also the grounds maintainers have a float, and they use that if they want, loves folks, whatever they need, for, you know, for, from iron lunders, whatever they get delivered. I'm afraid in this world now, a lot of people don't accept a cheque. Well, they wouldn't get a cheque anyway, because that'd mean Alan being twenty four seven, they want cash now, so they've got that money. We've got to be able to, we've got to be able to give them the cash, and we get the receipts, we get the receipts, and then it's put in books, and that's what the cash is.
But why are you not using bank transfer then? My hairdresser won't take cash off me, and they won't take cash, people won't take cash off you. Why is Thames Town Council using so much cash? It's not, I don't need to know what you're spending on it. There was nearly two thousand pounds in a month.
Your window cleaner don't, hairdresser don't clean windows, do you?
I know, she could think of saying, does that make sense?
I mean, this is confusing for not only your accounts, but it doesn't have that level of transparency that you need. Because I think you told me, you can put that on to the website to show exactly what it's being spent on. So, you've got thousands of pounds being spent in petty cash that I haven't got time to come and sit and sit with Alan, and I'd love to, I've got a full time job, to see exactly, and he hasn't got time to be telling me what he's spending it on. But as a, as a transparent council, as a transparent council, you should be showing what you are spending that money on, on your accounts that are visible online.
The, the bottom line?
If you're going to do cash, then can I just ask that it's visible online? So, it says cash, and it says what it's been used for. If you're going to have to use cash, is there a middle round here?
Petty cash, at least for the foreseeable medium to long term future, will obviously be used. For example, when the clerk returns up, he provides receipts, he hasn't got card facility, he won't pay in cash. Potter's Pies turning up, he'll pay in cash. Basically, a lot smaller than, will pay cash and don't give, don't give credit, or they don't have card payment. We do sometimes use a card as well. We only have one card in my name, so it's rated using by me or by managers, so you have it. But I like to keep that to myself and for managers, because obviously there's only one number for it, for scooty numbers. Bank transfers, we do one a month, because the bank transfer has to be authorized, as councillor Eales says, once a month, once a month. It's a fancy committee meeting, and I can be frank here and say, if that's the meeting I've got the most, and that's what I get grilled the most by councillors saying, what's that payment for, what's that payment for, and I've got paladins, I've decided to go through them. I'm going to go through it, no penalty, you know, but that's what they're there to do. And that's for the back payment every month, and those forms go up to the bar, it's assigned by me as a town clerk and by two councillors. I can't do a bank transfer just like that, because the risk would be, I could transfer it, go about days next week. So, we do back payments once a month, we do back payments, part is challenges to do a back payment. So, we can't just do back payments just like that. I appreciate the month that maybe paid for you, this elected, wasn't particularly every month a petty cash, but I can't sit here and say that there will not be petty cash, because there will. As finish playing the information, you quite rightly, our account system, RBS, it's like any petty system, there's a limited amount of space you can possibly, there's Twitter sort of thing, there's limited amount of characters. So, the petty cash payments, it just say petty cash, but there's some that ask about it, like you did yourself, who've then got the records to back that up. And as the chairman said earlier, every, or most areas of the council have that on float. When that float gets low, we get cheques signed to get the impress put back up to its, to its amount. But backing up that is a list of receipts which show the reason why we're asking to put the impress back up to its full amount. So, petty cash isn't ideal, that one one probably was a bit high, it's just the other one, those perfect storm circles, but it will never go back. In terms of the petty cash information, we'll try and get more information, some might have got my group. I can assure you they'll be able to do it.
Alan, can you just say, were you going to say the procedure as the councils prepared us? Has anything changed since the events coming to the, you know, to last council?
Exactly the same.
There's more, but there's more petty cash payments in the last two years than there were in previous years.
The only time in previous years they've gone challenging.
Well, you don't need to if it was less. There was less. I mean, maybe the clerk was to provide that information, but there's, there's definitely more payments in cash in the last two years.
Whatever, whatever this council pays out, all I can say is that there's a receipt to cover that, it's all due to the board. We have a sub finance meeting that everybody's entitled to come to, all councillors here, and they all look at them, tick them off, and they're happy it wasn't paid, and everything's on that. And then, like I said, three, four times a year, you still allow it to come to the cheque, invoices, and I didn't do it twice a year, sorry. And then obviously, we're like, do you allow it to, that, that, everything's sent off, and it's qualified. They come in in June and check everything, and for the last two years, everything's been, you know, o- okay. So, that, that's all I, you know, I can say is that all the figures are added up. But what you've got to remember, the last council, we had telepublic question time like this. You had to write in, if they didn't want to take these questions, they didn't, they didn't give you an answer. We're trying to be as open and transparent as we can by just writing your ears, you know, this evening, to try and answer your questions.
We're doing something in for you.
No, we're not bothered about that.
It's just, that's the great going backwards, aren't we?
Let's, let's, let's move forward, then, your next item on is, on this, is questions and answers generally. Let's go, let's go to, let's go to Alan. Your next, your next one then, on this agenda, is questions and answers generally. Steve?
Yeah, I'm sort of taking now, my office is vandalised, I've been also a member of staff, because they could have done to go and secure it for all of us.
It's, is it on the agenda for this week on the measure of report? It's on pleasure and rep, for fourth and all members, Steve, we've tried to plan it to get that fence lifted up like that, you know, we are, because obviously we know where they're getting in. We've had problems, we've badwired, we've badwired up, because it's quite near Wakefield County property. And so what we intend to do is get some clothes up on in Palisade though.
But back of my lot, I don't, I don't think they're in there, because they're stuck at, stuck at the back of the corner somewhere else.
I mean, there have been quite a few allotments brought in to... I'm saying, there have been quite a few allotments, so we are, but wings are polarised, government's been brought in to, so it's not just yards like this.
I'm afraid, I'm afraid the biggest problem we've got in ours is locking them gates when they're going. Every time they lock big gates, they wind up, little gates, they wind up. And then we'll catch such as that, your fencing, but complaining about that.
Well, that's going to be, just, just pleasure and rep, that little gate, because people abuse that. The tech shop comes in there and they don't lock it. And, and I get home calls quite a lot, saying, little gate's been on, separated from on the night, and it's been left on. And that's the issue there, you've got people coming in, you know, especially hours of darkness, so that's got to be resolved. I think what will probably go to is just one button gate to secure it better.
It's a switch on that gate anyway.
Yeah, and then, and then it, and then put that fence up. You see, they can still jump over that wall, Steve, and walk through allotments and then get, get to through. Yeah, but I'm saying, they can jump over this, this three or four to left yard, like where they're getting, you know, I mean, and walk down. So, until that Palisade's gone up, I mean, there's Palisade all the way around, apart from off that point. And I think that's one of the main points, is not locking that top gate. So, yeah, are there any more questions, anyone? Are your councillors any questions?
There's one here, gone through me, which I don't like at all. It's, it says, doing councillor, councillor Hardacre's garden, right? I was doing a lot of work down at Waffa Park, and I neglected my own garden. And all I did, I said to Alan, I want you to put me on old age pensioners' garden list, just to remove edges. I'm seventy five now, so that meant me seventy four at the time. I cut the edges, and I think if a blog's there, he might remember, or, and sent that up, filled it with edges, and that's the only thing I've ever had done.
I mean, obviously, tonight, we've got in excess of one hundred and twenty questions, and it's been more than possible. I mean, we'll just take questions from that, you know, to go through them all, so...
He's entitled, if you see, we do that scheme.
Yeah, just, just, just let me finish this, Jean, so it'd be possible for, for to go through this, up to twenty and answer one hundred and twenty questions at our estate. The thing is, we're pretty tired of it at that time, beating a lot, a lot of work down there at Water Park with, with flowers and raised beds and everything. That lad never stopped, and the cost is edges, we're getting a bit, a bit dilapidated. He joined, he paid out a five pound and ten pound fee, he paid, and he joined our garden scheme, and obviously, the lad went up and cut and tied it up.
No, I couldn't.
No, right, well, whatever. But all I'm saying is, it was technically wrong context. Now, these people that have put these questions in, like that question to Pete, why don't they come here and ask us these questions? You know, instead of, you know, writing a bit, and on his own screen. We, you know, we're, we're fair with everybody, we've answered all questions that's been put forward. We should go and, and, and put the questions forward themselves, please. Yeah, but we'll write, we'll write and answer the, the questions that we have got. Obviously, it's been a long day. Yeah, yes, you tell it.
It's a quick one, and he's entitled to it, he fits the criteria, he put the edges down himself. If you see the garden schemes that they're doing now, go out of jungle, they don't fence it down to everything for five pounds. It, it, it don't matter who's doing that, apparently know that, he's entitled to it, whether the council or not.
Why is somebody criticizing what's he done?
I think somebody saw, somebody saw it ran outside and thought, council are doing it in a great way, I reckon, and that's why it's all worked out. And, and yet, it wasn't a lot of problems down there, yes, Dave.
Who, who owns Fitzwilliam Centre?
Uh, I think, I think originally, the deeds are probably on Siswold, but Siswold allowed it to go into a trust. Wakefield Council took that, that over as trustees then at that time. But when government started making putbacks, obviously, Wakefield Council had, had to offload a lot of facilities that they had. Unfortunately, Fitzwilliam Welfare or Old People Centre, it's called the one. A search on land register, it's not registered with anybody, which is very much a look at it. And what happened then in two thousand and twelve, I think, at the town council, I was being stamped, we're on a tag, we stand for Old People Centre. Even me and stamp voted that Hensford Town Council go on as trustees for that. And obviously, there was quite a lot of money spent on it after our term in two thousand fifteen sixteen. And then the town council, or some of councillors, not all the councillors, the trustees of that Fitzwilliam Old People Centre, that took it in trust from Wakefield Council. So, the trust, I think, is operated from Liverpool, in Kita, the, the, that's a charity commission.
So, the town council are not the title deed holders then?
No, no, it's, we're not, no, we're, we're only, we're only trustees.
But wait, no, it's actually an asset transfer, council, it was an asset transfer.
Not according to, not according to my record. If it were an asset transfer, right, then obviously, it'd come out, it'd come out to Siswold. And the original deeds, which I think I'm right, but they're not registered, not man registered, they belong to Siswold. I think, I think you'll find that you're on with that. Because if you were an asset transfer, the town council, why are they interested in it?
And you wouldn't have to run it separately, would you, from me?
No, we wouldn't have to run it separately, as trustees for an asset transfer, we could just run it. Well, I, I, like I said, why would we be trustees for an asset transfer if we only did, we could do it locally, then we wouldn't have to have trustees. When we have a separate council, you don't, every year, there has to be, you know, we have to show it to them that, that's put into it.
So, have you actually, is there a professional trustee as well as councillors? Because most trust funds actually have a professional trustee, whether it be a solicitor, a barrister.
Everything was drawn up by a solicitor at a particular time.
I'm saying, have the trustees, there's so many trustees, you've just...
Yes.
Not everyone of these, these councillors, there's so many that are trustees.
Yeah.
Most trusts have a professional trustee to make sure that you're doing everything.
Well, town clerk does that.
So, are you saying that he's the professional trustee?
Yes, he's the responsible financial officer for everything, town council, no, just a minute. He's the responsible appointed financial officer for everything, town council, and he's appointed to oversee the running, the running of this trusteeship, that the council's a trustee of.
If a trust fund has a professional trustee, that isn't part of...
Is that a trust fund? Just let me put you on to Alan, because obviously...
Just to clarify, it's, it's, it's a charitable trust, it's a charity, I think there's a, um, there's a bit of confusion. Mel is, it's all right, so, to be frank, it was an asset transfer, it's transferred to a trust, and so it's held in trust. So, technically, the town council does not own it. It was a yours transfer from Wakefield to a trust, or the trust or Russell had it, and it transferred it, so Mel is right, it is a transfer, but it involves a right, it's held in trust. Strictly speaking, legally, the town council doesn't own it, the trust owns it. It's not a trust fund, and the trustees, by custom practice, have been the elected councillors of this, of this council. And yes, the council does have to keep them separate accounts, so most of the trustees are the town councillors. I'm that trustee per se, I think Alan and David, as you said, he has on the treasure or something like that. We do keep separate accounts, but I thought it doesn't make it in there, so the council chooses to, and let them give it again to keep it going.
Thanks to Alan.
It yields back from Wakefield Council, I saw you pay it back.
There is some income, but not enough to cover the costs.
Are there any further questions then?
Just want to say that about the...
Just a minute, just this lady, and I'll come back to you, yeah, yeah, Lily.
I just want to ans, actually answer a question, not ask a question. You asked why the people who are sending anonymous questions in, or sending them in by email or whatever, don't come to the meeting and ask them. We keep telling you, people want an interactive online meeting. People want to be able to join the meeting by Zoom, because they're sat at home feeding their kids, or whatever, at the time that these meetings are happening, or they're disabled, or they're elderly and they don't go out in the dark. Lots of reasons. A lot of parish councils and town councils have interactive meetings for this very reason. And that's why a small but vocal minority of people here keep saying, you need to do this. Facebook streaming's nice, but I... Facebook streaming's nice, but ideally you should have an interactive with Zoom or something like that, so people can literally put their hands up and say, Jim, I want to ask you a question, from their own living room. So that's your answer as to why they're not sitting here, they can't get here for whatever reason.
Yeah, I think it's on agenda for Thursday, it's on agenda for Thursday. Jane, John, Kate.
I think that's a good idea, but they shouldn't have made it to use the real name.
Yeah, you see, you see, things with that, you're going to get people that, that, that air deals it, and you might get people from Peterborough, or, you know, what the Saudis are, which has fallen in, which, which, and today, we can only discuss things concerning this parish, which is Enders Kids in Fitzwilliam.
But I, I could be from Sheffield, you don't know that, do you? So what you're saying, you don't actually know me?
Well, I, I know, I know, I know you're from Edinburgh. I don't think we've got any problem that people that live in Wakefield area are like, Mel, they don't live in Enders now, or kids are fit fully, whatever, they, you know, she's here, we're like, no, come on.
How do you know they don't live in Enders now?
Well, I didn't, I didn't think it is. It's not obvious. All right, well, there you go.
I could tell everybody where I live, it speaks of the street.
I thought you lived in Taurbray. All right, I don't think it's a kid's, it won't change. So are there any further questions, that anybody like the football?
I have another question, you go on.
Well, there's quite a few questions, but you've gone through, you've gone through a lot, but like, we were on about, stuff down at Waterpark that's happening, and stuff here that's happening, and you've got the public, you've got plenty of publicity. But I, you know, you have to give the right answers to them, don't mix it up, then they all understand what you're saying.
Well, I think we've done our best to answer all questions we've put forward. I mean, like I said, we've got a newsletter to come in out next week, there'll be eight people. Incorporating that, you were left with the details after Thursday's meeting, you know, we took progress, thank you boys, the working party. On the 21st of October, this is for all parishioners, we've got, we're providing a tea at five o'clock to anyone that comes, some sandwiches, cups of tea, coffee, whatever. We've got a game of ping pong, Shane's going to assist it, and a quiz about seven o'clock, what I've said, we've got a brass band concert for everybody. You know, now that we turn it on, we can get it.
Hope you've got brass band then?
It's Rockingham, Rockingham Brass Band will own it, that's the.
They even know about all that.
Well, it's, it's on, it's on Facebook and it's on boxes, and like I say, it will be under around newsletter next week. I think, how many tickets has gone on the board, because the tickets got already.
What, you know, already selling tickets?
No, we don't sell it, according to the.
You know, giving tickets out, that even now, that.
Well, it's, it's been up, and it's been advertised, and it's, it's on the website. That's on 21st of October. Obviously, on 31st of October, we've got Kids Halloween Party down at Lakeside Cafe. It's all been done for them, but there's some things put on, some games put on down there for them, for four and one, well, seven, at Lakeside Cafe, that's on Halloween 31st of October. We've got a spectacular firework display again at Bonfire down at Enders Waterpark on Friday 5th of November. And then on 16th of November, we've got an LAP or a Christmas dinner that's going to be provided in here. All tables will be set up for all residents of Enders, Kingsley, Fitzwilliam to attend. If, if they can't attend that Christmas dinner on that day, and there's a brass band concert after that, then we'll provide, same for Kingsley, Fitzwilliam residents at Enders Waterpark, you can turn up there. So we'll get a Christmas dinner, you know, on Enders Town Council on that day. And then obviously on Christmas, once again, we'll be, we're booked up, but we're doing Christmas dinner again at Lakeside Cafe. There's quite a lot of people booked for that, I think there's a few spaces left for Christmas dinner at Lakeside Cafe this year.
I remember what Alan was going to talk about, it was centre at Fitzwilliam, Old Folk Centre, as they say it's called.
Yes, I know.
Now that, it obviously can't ever be sold or knocked down, but it, the miners actually paid for it because it was taken out of the wages.
Yeah.
You know, banks were going to be £10 a week or a month or whatever they were earning, but they paid for it. And so it can't ever be sold or, like I say, sold or knocked down because it went, somebody did want to sell it a few years ago, well, they were thinking they could sell it, or thinking they could buy it. Somebody thought they could buy it, and they were going to knock it down, and they actually had shown plans. I was on council then, and they brought some plans up that they'd had done to build two mungles on it. And Wakefield Council agreed with them at the time. And I did have a bit of an argument with somebody on Wakefield Council, telling them it would nothing to do with them anyway, they didn't own it. And, and stuff like that, and it belonged to miners, you know, so this is it. A lot of people, I mean, there's not, that may just depends how old they are, and what, what they can remember what the miners did pay for. But I remember my old, my old father telling me that they took money out of the wages, you know, to pay for it. And that land belonged, the same land that the cricket pitch is on, you know, and, and so it can't ever be sold or taken away from, from there.
Yeah, I think it's in trust now, you know, for, 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 and like Mel said, I thought you were on council that time, weren't you?
That's how I knew it was justice. Yeah.
As it sounds fair, but obviously it is kept in our trust, it's in Enders Town Council. I mean, effectively, belongs to people, it's what uses people at Fitzwilliam.
Well, that's it, I mean, I'm pleased.
I mean, we started, we started group them up at Fitzwilliam last week, and I mean, it was a fantastic turnout to get kids up at speed. There were 43 kids attended first one, so, you know.
I'm pleased about that, but you see, what, what was sad when I, well, not me, just me, when we used to open, and you'd come there, but we had to charge the children for coming in.
Yeah.
It helped pay for some of the trips, but we had to pay Wakefield Council so much in order for that.
I think what it will make is a struggle, you know, to build it, so that, I just want to ask you a question then.
Can I just thank you, Anne, for that, because I had no idea about the history of that. Do you think it might be a good idea to put something like that in one of your newsletters?
Yes.
So I like the fact about, you know, where it's, it's.
It is on website, I mean, citizens' advice is on website, solicitor once a month's on website, and youth boards are also on website.
I mean, the history of the, of the building itself.
The energy of this, this.
No, I appreciate that.
Yeah, we can put it on our website, yeah.
Yeah, a bit of history, because I had no idea about that, it's really interesting.
I think, I think last custodians of that were with Tiswold, and then obviously Tiswold, what, what it is.
These one from the end there, and when we opened the Fitzwilliam Centre, we had all the banners at the back. So there are some photographs that I thought Alan can access, that are people to see. We felt it was important to keep the anywhere links, which is why we have credit to everyone that sees, to keep those anywhere links, and to provide a warm face page to everyone. So I'm sure that you can inform the residents about that, that there will be evidence of that, it's not our problem.
If you could, if you could second to Alan, it will save the, the time of a period.
It worked out with the Fitzwilliam Hotel. I mean, it wasn't as old as the Fitzwilliam Hotel, but that was a listed building, the Fitzwilliam Hotel.
Yes, Jane, I think you have a question.
Jill.
Jill, sorry.
Um, why you say that Fitzwilliam Youth Club age range for that is eight to 16, and Ensworth is 11 to 16, is the only reason?
I'll pass that on to Alan.
They're, they're not set in stone, we, the council procure the services of a, of a charity called Inspiring Community, and they're youth work professionals, and so they, they know what they're doing. There is, there is some outreach work in the weeks leading up to both the opening on the Enders one and the Fitzwilliam one. And as part of that outreach work, they understand the local kids, what sort of things they want, and what sort of age range. So it's not set in stone, either way, it's the age range or the activities. And so it's, it's a moving piece, if you like, so I'm moving sensitive kids as well, if the age range is eight to 15, they'll turn away seven year olds. So I appreciate, when I just got the flight to, I created as well, so why they do it, and that's how they explain it, so no, they won't turn anyone away. But that's, that's how it came about, from their outreach work in the weeks leading up to it, as to which, which kids most wanted it.
Right, thank you for that, it was just that some, I can remember, I think it were on your group, Alan, someone was saying about that, they're just misstouting Ensworth because they're attending. Yeah, so.
Thanks for attending, Tom.
I'm going to dial it.
Yeah, I'll take one last question then, yes.
Can I just say that you've mentioned all the information is on the website? How many people will not be able to get access to the website, you would be surprised how many people.
Yes, well, because of that.
You have some information.
Yeah, because of that, we usually, we usually book three newsletters out, three, call three times a year. Surely three times a year, I think, in the autumn, spring, summer, and then.
Information, for example, in the library advertising it, if you want about any events happening, and you can update it. Not that once to three times a year, but on a monthly basis, if there is something, people need to be aware that the information is there, but I think.
Yeah, I think, I think you're right, you know, we need to step up now, now that pandemics going out at late, and, and, you know, inform people better than what we have been doing.
About some people coming here for dinner, I'm sure that all the generations would be happy to come.
Yeah.
That they won't get the information, you know, have to make it, whether the transport would be needed or not. But let's say they can walk it up to here for a nice dinner, they are all isolated, and we're definitely generous from it. So, you know, something to consider, how the information can be delivered.
Well, most of the things now that I've mentioned tonight will be going on newsletter, hopefully it will be going out next week, to every resident or every house in Enders, Kingsley, and Fitzwilliam, so.
Will you be putting any chance, for example, for his meal?
I don't think, I don't think we can do all that, and it's going to be too difficult, but what we can do for people that, I mean, we're still doing about, 80, 90 dinners every Sunday, that people that's still isolated or, or disabled or infirm. So, you know, if they can't get this event, then obviously we'll, we'll deliver more for them, we'll, we'll pull that responsibility on.
Are you going to put on your web, on, on the council website about councillor Wensley that he's stood down? Because I didn't know that, and I'm sure a lot of people do, have obviously just thought that Ian's disappeared. So perhaps you will put the, the website so that we do know that Ian's stood down.
I'll, I'll leave, I'll go on to Alan.
And well, I spoke with councillor, oh, sorry, he still is councillor, he's a councillor, isn't he? Well, I spoke to him the other day to inform me. I asked him, you obviously put a notice on the website, and his answer was, no, it's let people find out naturally, so there wouldn't spread that sort of thing. We'll put it on the website in the next few days, is the notice we advertise the main concern.
Well, once again, ladies and gents, thanks for attending tonight's meeting, back for your questions. I appreciate you, Neil, and hope to see you again on Thursday, Peter, 10, Thursday, thank you.